All right, are we ready? I'm sorry that we kept you waiting. We're gonna get started with the May eighth, twenty 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 twenty-three meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Our Township Manager is going to make a statement based on the actions that happened on April eleventh. Carolyn?
Thank you. Uh, the following is in response to statements made during the public comment portion of the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three Board of Supervisors Public Meeting. Statements concern the Police Department's response to a call for service on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Background. Since March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Montgomery Township Police Department has received three calls pertaining to suspicious activity within the development where this incident occurred. On March sixteenth, a suspicious person was seen running through backyards overnight in the area of Magdalena Lane and Line Street. On April third, twenty twenty-three, a suspicious person was seen walking through backyards overnight in the area of Magdalena Lane. On April ninth, twenty twenty-three, a suspicious person was seen walking through backyards overnight in the area of Magdalena Lane. Innocence summary and investigation. On Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at nine fifty-six P M., Montgomery Township Police Department Officers were dispatched by the Montgomery County Communications Center to the area of Wentworth Drive and Manor Drive for a suspicious vehicle. The caller advised that since approximately nine thirty-six P M., quote, "for the last twenty minutes," end quote, he observed a white Suburban looping around, making four passes through the development at a slow speed while he was walking his dog. The resident advised he had never seen the vehicle before, nor could he see who was driving because it was dark and the vehicle had partially tinted windows. Two single officer patrol units responded to the call for service. At ten oh one P M., an officer arrived in the area of the development and began checking for the vehicle. At ten oh six P M., the same officer observed a twenty nineteen white GMC Yukon traveling on Wentworth Drive. The officer conducted a traffic stop of the vehicle on Addison Lane and Wentworth Drive. The vehicle met the description provided by the Montgomery County Communications Center. Note, a Suburban and Yukon are GM products and can be easily confused due to their striking similarities. The officer approached the vehicle and verbally engaged the driver as he approached. At ten oh six, ten P M., the officer spoke to the driver for the first time, asking the driver if she was lost. The officer explained the reason for his interaction based upon the information provided in the call for service. During the interaction, the officer requested the driver's license per standard procedures. In concluding the traffic stop, the officer requested the driver's phone number, as officers are required to obtain phone numbers when responding to calls for service for record management purposes. However, the driver declined providing such information, and the officer chose to forego this records requirement. In concluding the interaction at ten oh seven fifty-five P M., the officer returned the driver's license and closed the interaction. The officer's interaction with the driver lasted less than two minutes. Additional comments were made concerning our policies and training. Policy four oh one of the Montgomery Township Police Department addresses bias-based policing, and it was last reviewed on February sixth, twenty twenty-three. Relevant Bias Training. Discovering Diversity and Creating Community on February twenty-first, twenty nineteen and February twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen through the Pearl S. Buck International Foundation. All sworn personnel completed the instruction. Managing Implicit Bias for Law Enforcement in twenty twenty through the Anti-Defamation League of Philadelphia, P A. A portion of sworn personnel completed instruction. The training was paused due to COVID-nineteen. The Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission develops a course curriculum each year and requires current municipal officers to receive training in this curriculum to keep their certification. Every year, the curriculum includes legal updates, which review changes in federal and state laws, and several other topics the commission selects. In twenty twenty-two, every municipal officer was required to take a block titled Understanding Bias. This training was a three-hour block that included an exam to ensure officers understood the course material. All sworn personnel completed the training. History of Policing and Cultural Diversity Training on November eighth, twenty twenty-one, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, December first, twenty twenty-two, and December second, twenty twenty-two. A portion of sworn personnel, due to scheduling not all can attend at one time, attended this county-wide training initiative conducted by the Pennsylvania State Police Heritage Affairs Division, sponsored by the Chiefs of Police Association of Montgomery County, as one of Chief Bendig's county-wide training initiatives as president of the association. The department described to plan it, subscribes to plan it, excuse me, a program designed for managing, scheduling, and training in law enforcement agencies. Utilizing this platform, all department members were assigned training in various topics, including reviewing department policies and procedures. The following training was assigned and has been completed by all members of the department. Twenty fifteen, Critical Montgomery Township Policy Review of General Order One Point Eight Point Three, Bias-Based Policing, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission Approved. Twenty sixteen, Critical Montgomery Township Policy Review of General Order One Point Eight Point Three, Bias-Based Policing, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accredited Commission Approved. Twenty seventeen, Critical Montgomery Township Policy Review of General Order One Point Eight Point Three, Bias-Based Policing, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission Approved. Twenty eighteen, Critical Montgomery Township Policy Review of General Order One Point Eight Point Three, Bias-Based Policing, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission Approved. Twenty nineteen, Critical Montgomery Township Policy Review of General Order One Point Eight Point Three, Bias-Based Policing, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission Approved. The department subscribed to the Police One Academy Online Training Platform in twenty nineteen. This platform has hundreds of training programs and videos, many of which are approved through the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission. The platform also allows departments to customize training programs to allow for the review of department policies. Officers must also complete monthly training in relevant topics selected by command staff. Officers are also tested at the end of select courses to ensure course material is understood. Through this platform, the following training was assigned and has been completed by all members of the department. Twenty twenty, Anti-Bias Training for Law Enforcement, one-hour full-length course. Twenty twenty, Critical Montgomery Township Policy Review of General Order One Point Eight Point Three, Bias-Based Policing, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission Approved. Twenty twenty-one, Critical Montgomery Township Policy Review of General Order One Point Eight Point Three, Bias-Based Policing, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission Approved. Twenty twenty-two, Critical Montgomery Township Policy Review of General Order One Point Eight Point Three, Bias-Based Policing, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission Approved. Additionally, all individuals as part of their Act one-twenty certification to become a police officer receive seventeen hours of instruction, bias-based slash equity slash inclusion instruction per the Director of Public Services Training Programs at Montgomery County Community College. As President of the Chiefs Association, Chief Bendig organized and attended a four-hour inclusive policing-for-leaders training conducted by the Anti-Defamation League for Montgomery County Chiefs of Police on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Montgomery Township comprised of our elected officials, the Board of Supervisors, and staff, strive to treat our residents and those we interact with daily with respect and dignity, regardless of their race, ethnicity, national origin, religion, gender, or sexual orientation.
Thank you. Thank you. Up next is public comment. That would be public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Would anyone like to say anything tonight? All right. Number four, announcement of executive session.
Thank you very much. The Board of Supervisors met earlier this evening at six-thirty to discuss a litigation matter and a personnel matter. The topics discussed are legitimate subjects of executive session pursuant to the Commonwealth Sunshine Law.
Thank you so much. Number five is our consent agenda.
I am gonna request one addition or change to that, if we may. Last meeting, myself and Supervisor Audrey Ware were absent, but we were at a township conference, so it wasn't an absence due to sickness or vacation, but I'd like that to reflect that it was for township business.
Thank you. Sure. So, um, we're gonna move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following, the minutes of the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three board meeting with the addition or change requested and payment of bills for May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Second. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number six. We have a presentation. Guess, Ryan reps? On proposed plastic ban reduction ordinance. Thank you for coming out tonight.
How's everybody doing today? Thank you for listening to us at the E A C, Environmental Analysis Committee. I am here to talk about single-use plastic waste reduction and the ordinance. We are suggesting that the township take action on three items. That would be styrofoam, plastic straws, and plastic bags. So, we have circulated a document that highlights all of our suggestions in full, which I don't wanna waste the board's precious time, but all that has been put in writing for you. And, uh, if you have any questions, you know where to find us. So, if any questions now, I can answer them for you. Doesn't matter, I can answer them later.
There's a price of fifteen cents per bag if the customer doesn't bring a bag. Was there any math or science to coming up with that number?
So, that is the, um, that is the standard fee that other townships have used. So, we have, um, you know, and, uh, Don, Don Hamp has, has been a leader in, in that area, and the research provided gave us the fifteen cent value is enough to cover their costs for these bags, uh, as long as they're forty percent recycled material. That was the caveat there.
Anything else?
Is the six-month grace period something that you've seen in other townships as well? Is that why six months is put out there?
We, I think we developed that on our own, given that, um, people have probably tried to stockpile things, and it's fair to let them use their, you know, their, their resources as they, as they see fit. However, um, most people, you think, only buy a month or two at, you know, at the most, and that's, uh, six months is more than enough for them to get used to it, 'cause I think most people are kind of ready for it anyway.
Okay, can we? Yeah, there was a survey done, I mean, we have all the good info, Carolyn.
Not to put you on the spot, but from a practical perspective, um, what has been your experience in looking at how other communities best got the word out to people?
They, um, they did it by email, they did it by social media, they did it by mailers. So, we do suggest that a mailer to the local businesses would be ideal. You know, ahead of, uh, you know, a couple months ahead of time, then a month ahead of time, perhaps.
Uh, templates are also given out for two-day businesses, so they can post, um, um, signs at their stores to alert people to the, um, pending change, upcoming changes, so people can kind of, and I think people in our area are aware that these things have happened, as we have it happen at Wegmans already on their, on their own account. So, that's something we can, we've seen other, I think it was West Goshen Township had some really good templates that we can use and, um, which is in the Westchester area.
Westchester.
And they had really good, um, examples of things that they can do to help with, uh, the increased awareness, not only to the businesses, but to the community as well.
They've been very successful, and, um, most of the larger stores around here, the corporations, are, you know, they, they just said they're gonna follow whatever New Jersey and Philadelphia did. You know, they, they have their flaws, of course, but, you know, we're not trying to do everything at once. We're doing like the, what we think are the most harmful things. Styrofoam, I, I think that's, that's long overdue, but, you know, that's why we put it on the list.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
And thanks to Donna back there, who's brought a lot of this to our attention. Um, moving on to the public safety part, um, item number seven, Fire Services Quick Response Service Presentation. Chief Wegman.
Uh, yes, I'd like to ask firefighter Weltman and Doctor Overberger to come up and give a quick presentation of our quick response service.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Uh, we're here to give a quick presentation on what Q R S program is meant to be. Uh, we've been in the process of planning this program for over a year, and we're excited to offer another service to the residents and, uh, people that work in this community. Uh, simply, what is a Q R S? A Q R S is a non-transport emergency medical service, whereas an ambulance treats and transports patients. Uh, this service simply goes out, treats the patients, and then turns them over to the ambulance service. The service is designed to reduce the time between a nine-to-one call and when help first arrives. It's not that we see an issue with that in the township, we just feel that the need is, we, we are there so we can go out and help on these, uh, these critical calls. Q R S response is going to start with only priority one calls, which are the most critical calls. I'll hit on that a little bit further in the next slide. Like I said before, it does not transport patients, we're just there to bridge the gap and, uh, start treatment, uh, earlier than the ambulance. What is our plan?
You can have
Uh, the initial rollout of the Q R S will begin with the career staff only, just to get the program started and understand, uh, the laws and where we need to, uh, figure things out. Uh, it'll start weekdays from seven A M. to five P M., uh, since the career staff is on. Once the program is established and, uh, the laws have been worked out, it will be rolled out to the entire department, so it will be provided twenty-four seven. Initially, both of our squad trucks, their staff, fire trucks, will be certified as Q R S vehicles. Uh, you can certify support vehicles such as pickup trucks and S U Vs, and that may be, uh, considered in the future. At, at the beginning of the program, we'd like to start with just squads. The Q R S, like I mentioned, will only be responded, sorry, dispatched to priority one calls within Montgomery Township. Uh, priority one calls are, they're laid out in the, uh, the maps that you have. They're the most critical calls that happen, uh, and with the Q R S, we also have the potential to respond to any call, not only priority one calls, if the officer or the senior member determines that a early intervention will assist in patient care. So, anytime we feel necessary that we can make a difference in better care in the township, we, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. And then the current status, like I said, this process started, uh, over a year ago with the personnel completing E M T. Uh, so several of our members gained that recently and are now certified. The applications, in order to get certified as an EMS provider in the state, you have to, uh, submit applications to both the county and the state EMS office. Those have both been submitted, uh, which were approved through the county, we're waiting for the state to give us final approval. Once they have that, then the county comes out and inspects the vehicles and gives the final stamp of approval for the store. In order to get these, uh, applications approved, we have the right summer policies that we have, uh, been developed specifically for the Q R S, uh, with the service in mind. Uh, the equipment has been ordered for the Q R S. Uh, we have to put some additional equipment on the squad, uh, fire trucks, so that we can provide medical care. And the department works closely with the Montgomery Township Ambulance Provider, V M S C. We wanna make sure that from the beginning that this is the best service possible, that we are assisting them and in no way injuring them. And then finally, the department's entered into an agreement with Einstein Practice, uh, Doctor Ryan Overberger, for medical direction, every EMS agency is required to have medical direction, where we had, we have questions we need to ask, or we are on call and we have a tough question, and they can even, uh, support us with, uh, continuing education and education in general. So, I'll turn it over to Ryan if he has anything to say.
Yeah, thanks for everyone's time. Uh, yeah, and just to sort of put it in English, what is a quick response service? It's the idea of just formalizing the relationship that, uh, EMS, uh, and, and fire agencies have, where, uh, you know, doing sort of mutual response, so, okay, high-security calls, choking, unconscious cardiac arrest, things that were, you know, seconds matter, minutes matter type emergencies. Uh, if an ambulance is five minutes away and the fire department is two minutes away, those three minutes can be a big difference to that parent, to that, to that patient, uh, in terms of someone's here, someone knows this, you know, the, what to do, uh, and, and gets the patient's side. It formalizes that, it puts us into the, you know, not just into the fire side of the system, but into the EMS side of training, uh, education, um, the response, there's, there's collaborative relationships. Uh, I'm an, uh, emergency doctor in the Einstein-Jefferson system, uh, the medical director for V M S C already, so I'm in sort of a natural, you know, uh, partnership with, you know, and, and the Q R S is gonna work really closely with the, uh, EMS agencies in that area. So, uh, it seemed like a natural partnership for us to, uh, to, to take this on with, um, Montgomery Township as well, um, in terms of providing those interactions. We have opportunities for training, uh, to get our, you know, members, uh, acquainted and just really, um, uh, turn your, uh, turn this into sort of a, uh, a best practice, uh, model out there. Places like, you know, Seattle and, uh, even sort of, when we look at, we, Lake County or Carolina, we look at EMS systems that do the best medical care in the country are doing this. They're sending all of those resources to the right calls and partnering, uh, five EMS police in bringing that response to get, to get patients the best. So, uh, I think it's a great opportunity for the township, uh, to, you know, to build the bolster of the response and, uh, in, in proof that any of the care we can offer to patients. And, uh, I'm not gonna take any questions as well.
There's no chance that, um, the ambulance won't come? There won't be confusion that Q R S went, the ambulance? I mean, what's in place to make sure that doesn't happen?
It's a great question. So, the, the way that the county dispatch system works is, uh, one, sort of what they call a, uh, uh, box card and things. It's, without getting into the details, they're always will send the right EMS, um, asset, and then on certain types of calls where a Q R S would be, uh, dispatchable, if there is one, uh, you know, in that system, they build it out to add that on. Certainly, if anyone has, uh, can explain that better than I can, but that's, there's no chance that an ambulance doesn't come.
Okay.
The Q R S is, is a, a different type of asset in a CAD system, so they would never only send the Q R S to a call. It would be, but, and let's say that there's, that we have an incident in the township where, um, you know, maybe that ambulances, both ambulances are, are, uh, you know, took, uh, trauma patients to Abington from a, you know, an accident, and they're all, and everybody's out of the township, bringing, you know, coming back. Now, maybe the Q R S department, you know, can get there in five minutes and wait for, you know, an, an ambulance coming from two townships over, uh, and that may be ten or fifteen minutes that they could be at a patient's side sort of providing care, uh, in advance of that. So, there's lots of opportunities to grow this to the dispatch side, like what other kind of calls? But there's, you know, a lot of places in, in more rural parts of Pennsylvania will add their Q R S to, to a dispatch when the ambulance time of arrival is more than X number of minutes as a way. You know, so they might, it might be a minor call, but if the ambulance is too far away, then they might add a Q R S just to get someone there and be able to start doing some patient assessment of patient care. So, there's a lot of, of future growth opportunities. I think what we're proposing right now is, is what a lot of fire departments that do this in Montgomery County do, which has started the highest part already. Uh, I, I'm also the medical director for Sheldonham Townships, uh, Fire Department Q R S, um, and which does a very similar model to this and which really well, uh, in that community.
Can you describe some of the equipment that's going to be added to, uh, the squads?
Uh, sure. I just ordered for all the equipment necessary, uh, some of the equipment is, is a suction device for managing airways, uh, some D L S style, with basic life support airways. We also ordered, uh, things like, uh, oxygen, we have oxygen now, so we can provide oxygen, and things and other things that, we already carried some basic medical equipment. We're just going the first step to get certified, so that way we can then provide this service, uh, with the proper certifications.
So, you would have A E Ds already, probably?
Correct, all of our, our apparatus.
Right, which is always a concern. We keep hearing on the news about people that, and it's a matter of, you know, it's so critical to get there early, especially with sporting events and whatever else, but also with drownings and things like that. You, you know, every second counts. So, this is wonderful.
Part of this, what a lot of, some of this stuff, like, it's, it's things that we're already, that we were already doing, right? Already had some of this equipment. What this does is it, it gives the state now gives us the list and says, this is what you must have. It brings someone out to check it, to make sure that, you know, sort of to hold us accountable, to make sure that we, you know, the stuff is, you know, in date and, you know, it, it gives us sort of that additional layer of oversight and accountability that is, uh, you know, helpful in just sort of making sure that we stay above the, you know.
And then you have a connection with the hospital? So, they can give additional training and
Additional ability now, as part of the E M S system, if there was a, a need to call, you know, sort of, folks can call me directly, folks can call any of the medical and hospitals in the region, uh, as sort of formalizes that. They, they become, the fire department becomes part of the EMS system when they're, when they're working as a Q R S, instead of sort of a separate entity.
How is this different from what would, would be called a paramedic?
Uh, so, it's, the, the levels of, of EMS care, um, are, there's what's called basic life support. That's, that's an ambulance, typically ambulance to, to E M Ts. E M T has about a hundred and twenty hours, a hundred and forty hours plus, you know, practical training of, of background, managing the basics of every emergency, and that would be the level of care being provided. So, B L S ambulance provides basic life support care and then transport to the hospital. A Q, our quick response service will provide basic life support care, but not transport to the hospital.
Everything but the transport.
Paramedic is what's called advanced life support. They have thou, uh, thirty thousand hours of, of training,
Okay.
drug, uh, medications, um, advanced, you know, interventions, procedures, things like that. It's a much more, uh, uh, sort of higher level of care in terms of what they can do. Uh, but the important thing to notice is that what, what's in that B L S scope is actually what saves people's lives. Diffusion, like you mentioned, managing airways, treating, uh, you know, a bee sting with, uh, antidotes, right? All of those truly like emergencies, the fire department Q R S would have the capability of intervening on many of those, uh, even many of those emergencies.
How does this impact our budget in any way? Like, how does this all kind of roll around in our budget then? Is that a new line item for us? And all those kinds of questions are rolling through my head.
Uh, it is a line item. Um, we did budget money in this year's budget for our Q R S, we budgeted eight thousand dollars. Eighteen hundred dollars went to Einstein for medical direction, and then the rest is really going into equipment. Um, last year, the township invested about ten thousand dollars with Jefferson to have, uh, the career staff and volunteers who were able to take it, uh, complete the E M T class through Jefferson. That was a daytime endeavor. Um, we're, we're already doing this, uh, the career staff. Uh, we, we have a really great career staff, and Jake has done a phenomenal job with, with Q R S and the EMS part of, you know, a lot of firefighters get really nervous and upset when you say EMS. So, Jake, uh, he's done a phenomenal job, uh, making this work for us. The guy, the people we have in place now are already jumping these types of calls. Um, they're not the type to sit around when a, when a priority one call comes in and say, oh, I wonder what that's about. They're in the truck and they're going. Um, so we felt that it was better, since we're already doing it, to have credibility and credentialing, and if anybody, God forbid, makes a mistake, we have been certified. Um, so we were kind of operating under good Samaritan, uh, but now we'll have somebody checking our policies, we'll be accredited. Um, Ryan has been fantastic working with us. Um, he's got a lot of great plans, he's been with us from the beginning, and we've really integrated well with V M S C. Uh, we went to them and said, hey, we wanna start Q R S, and we wanna do it the way that you want us to do it, so that there's, there's no, there's no issue with transfer of care, even providing information. The expectations are there, the joint training is there. So that there's, there's no, there's no issue with transfer of care, even providing information, the expectations are there, the joint training is there. Um so I think uh at at the boogie down the parkway, the person who um kind of certifies QRS, I said, boy, it's, you guys are the longest company it's taken to get a QRS up and running. And I, I kind of took that as a compliment uh because I think that Jake has done such a great methodical job with making sure when this rolls out that it's done properly, um that that it's going to be a good thing. And and like, like Jake said, um we're going to start with the career staff and work out all the kinks and then hopefully uh let it come over to the volunteers. And that might even attract more volunteers who don't necessarily want to be firefighters, but they want to be nurses or they want to be doctors. So they just come up. I think North Wales and Upper Gwinnett have their QRS team are not firefighters. They're just volunteers who want to run on the QRS. So this, this is, we should have been doing this twenty years ago. Uh I think it's good that we're doing it now. And the calls that we're going to be running, um it's always up to the officer's discretion and will always come when, when they ask for help. But Montgomery Township doesn't have a lot of these priority one calls. Um so it's not really going to impact what we do day to day with inspections and pre-planning and community relation events. Uh I don't, I don't think we'll see an impact with a, a reduction in our other community risk reduction activities, but.
Chief, the uh the incident recently at the Community Recreation Center uh where there was a cardiac incident, right? With uh someone who was playing, was it pickleball, I think?
Yes.
Yeah. So would this have, would that have been the ideal, like, priority one situation?
Yeah, I mean, our guys did a, I'm super proud of them. I, I wasn't around. I was, I think it was with the boss. We were up at um Pelraz. But uh the guys heard the call come in for the unconscious, so it wasn't even a call that they would have been dispatched on. Um but anytime, any type of dispatch to the rec center or the township building, they know to go. Uh so I think uh Angelina did a great job with notifying nine one one and and starting the assessment. And uh Andrew Backland and Pete Burns got there like right away. Um and they were able to get Pete started CPR, Andrew was able to get an AED, and then Jake was there and the guys jumped in doing, and they, and they saved this gentleman's life. Um he's actually doing really well. Uh I got to speak to his family twice last week because uh we submitted the team for a life-saving award. So we're waiting to hear back from the American Red Cross. I mean, they, they saved that gentleman's life. Hands down a hundred percent by their being there within two minutes of this person going on cardiac arrest, they saved his life. And the person's wife had passed away two weeks prior. So for the family, this was, this was great, so.
Thank you for all of that, chief. You've really, you've taken this department, yeah.
It's the guy, good staff. They make me look good.
And the VMSC has really pulled themselves together and and it's really come along and we're very happy with the VMSC as well. So thank you, thank you for your work. This is great. Saving lives already.
That's cool.
If everyone's good with it, I'm going to move to approve the department's participation in the QRS program and medical direction with Einstein Practice Plan Incorporated with Dr. Ryan Overberger, D.O.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thanks for taking long and making sure it was perfectly done. I'm okay with that. Alright, so um number eight, we have swearing in of a new FDMT fire police officer, Ms. Amber D. Gregorio. Throw that to the chief as well.
Amber recently joined the Fire Department Montgomery Township and is being nominated by the FDMT to be appointed a special fire police officer under the Pennsylvania State Fire Police Statute. Under this law, before the applicant can perform the duties of special fire police officer, the nominated candidates must be confirmed by the Board of Supervisors and sworn in by the chairperson of the board. Amber has been interviewed by Lieutenant Dockerty of the Montgomery Township Police Department. And based on all the information, Lieutenant Dockerty believes that Amber has the understanding and ability to perform the duties of special fire police officer in Montgomery Township. Amber recently completed a sixteen hour course in basic fire police training through the Montgomery County Fire Academy. It is recommendation staff that the Board of Supervisors appoint Amber to the position of Special Fire Police Officer effective May eighth, twenty twenty-three, and welcome her to Montgomery Township.
Great. I guess I'll read the resolution and then we'll do the oath. Is that okay? I'm going to move to appoint Ms. D. Gregorio to the position of Special Fire Police Officer effective May eighth, twenty twenty-three, and welcome her to Montgomery Township.
Second.
Any public comment? Um all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations and welcome.
So I, Amber D. Gregorio, I, Amber D. Gregorio, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend, that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this common law, and the Constitution of this common law, and that I will enforce the laws of the common law, and that I will enforce the laws of the common law, and the ordinance of Montgomery Township, and the ordinances of Montgomery Township, and that I will discharge the duties of Special Fire Police Officer with fidelity, and that I will discharge the duties of Special Fire Police Officer with fidelity. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Alright. Alright, we're going to move on to administration and finance. Number nine, adoption of ordinance twenty-three dash three fifty-five, which is our Comcast franchise agreement. Carolyn?
Thank you. Uh the Cohen Law Group has successfully negotiated the cable franchise renewal agreement with Comcast of Pennsylvania LLC. Unlike Verizon, even with the changes in the technology and the uncertainty of the market, Comcast continues to require a ten-year agreement. The franchise fee percentage remains the same as our current agreement with the definition of gross revenue, including language for sources that may not exist at this time. The township is also permitted to conduct a franchise fee audit with new terms deemed fair to both sides. The agreement also has language ensuring that a bundled discount is not solely applied to a customer's cable services, which would reduce the calculated gross revenue. An executive summary was included for the board in the packet, which details the terms of the agreement more fully. Staff is recommending the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance, which has been properly advertised and made available for public inspection here at the Township Building.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. I'm going to move to adopt ordinance number twenty-three dash three thirty-five, approving the renewal of the cable franchise agreement with Comcast of Pennsylvania LLC.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Um number ten, we have participation in DVRPC grant application for EV charging stations. That will be fun.
So government loves its um, its acronyms. Um DVRPC is Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, EV charging stations or electric vehicles. We received notification from DVRPC of an opportunity to participate in their grant application for federal funding as part of the Charging Fueling Infrastructure Program. I participated in a virtual meeting on April twenty-sixth, which outlined what they need from their partners and asked us to identify potential project locations so they can begin an evaluation and narrative for the grant. A letter of intent was needed by May first, but it does not bind us to the application until the board reviews the information and decides about our participation. After identifying several locations I thought would be valuable for inclusion in the grant, I spoke to Public Works staff, specifically Greg Reif and facilities staff, to better understand the electric service in the areas and to identify any potential challenges. A letter of intent is included in the packet and identifies the Township Building, the Community and Recreation Center, Wendell Street Park, and Whistle Stop Park as locations for EV charging stations. Each one would have to have a minimum of four EV charging stations. Uh the reason I thought the Township Building is because we are going to be transitioning, obviously, into electric vehicles as we move forward. Um also, we have Neshamni Falls across the street, which, you know, is an underserved community in terms of the ability to have someplace close by to charge their vehicles. Um this would not be a taxpayer expense. People would go to these charging stations and use a credit card somewhere if they were purchasing gasoline for their vehicles. Uh the other reason we picked the Community and Recreation Center is because for a Level Two charge, we have people who are using the Recreation Center for a number of hours, not just those who go there to exercise, but during the day, um the building has become very popular for training, um for staff development. A lot of companies are using, a lot of nonprofit organizations are using it because the rental is very fair for the amenities they are getting. And those people would also then have an opportunity to charge their vehicle while they're using the facility. Um Wendell Street Park is our largest park where we have a lot of organized activities. And again, those parents or visitors to the park would have an opportunity to plug their vehicles in while they're watching soccer, baseball, et cetera. And then finally, Whistle Stop Park um is unique because, as you know, it sits in Hatfield Township, meaning it would also serve the residents of Hatfield Township, New Britain Township. It's not far from the Colmar Train Station. I felt it hit all the, the appropriate buttons, if you will, for DVRPC to include in the grant application. Uh the match that we would be required would be twenty percent, and because we're dealing with the federal government, this is going to take some time. However, um it's taxpayer money that's going to be funneling through to our community if we're successful versus communities in the area. There would be a match of twenty-five to fifty thousand per location. That would be for four stations, not per station, but for the four. Um the users would pay for electricity with the credit card. Uh the grant would be announced in September. And as I said, it would be a Level Two. Level Three, One, is just very expensive and it's just the electric that's required to run there. We would be looking at a much greater match than the twenty percent. So Level Two makes the most sense for us. And additionally, as an added benefit, it ties in with our Ready for One Hundred initiative, which is not just putting the township to be, you know, in more of a sustainable position, but also our community with us taking the lead on it.
Sounds great. Thank you for all your hard work and thinking where they should go and getting us in there to get it.
So do those payments come back to the township? Do they go elsewhere?
No, the payments go to the vendors, the vendor who's providing funding to put them in.
Fine. Anybody have any questions? Alright, I'm going to move to ratify Montgomery Township's preliminary submission and letter of intent to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and support the grant application for Charging Fueling Infrastructure.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. That was a lot of words to say. Um eleven is a um tax appeal settlement for twelve eighteen Welsh Road. I guess there's, and then there's twelve twenty-two Welsh Road.
Yes, in September twenty twenty, owners of property twelve, at twelve eighteen Welsh Road, condo one, presented information to the Board of Assessment Appeals, which they issued a notice of no change in assessment determination. At that time, the assessed value of the property was two point six million dollars based on the common level ratio. The market value for that property is to determine at six point six million. The proposed settlement was negotiated between the school district and the taxpayer. The fair market value would become five point four million for tax year twenty twenty-three, resulting in a decreased assessed value to two point one million. Based on the proposed settlement, the township would issue a refund in the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents for a three-year period. Um the solicitor's office has reviewed the proposed settlement and recommends the Board of Supervisors approve the settlement.
Okay. I'm going to move to approve the stipulated settlement for twelve eighteen Welsh Road, condo number one, and authorize the township solicitor execute the document on behalf of the township. Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one.
Next one, similar to the first one. Uh in Sep- September twenty twenty, this owner's of property at twelve twenty-two Welsh Road, condo two, presented information to the Board of Assessment Appeals. They also issued a notice of no change in assess- assess- assessment determination. The assessed value of the property is seven point one million. Um common level ratio has market value of the property at eighteen million for tax year twenty twenty-three. Again, a proposed settlement was negotiated between the school district and the taxpayer. The fair market value would become fifteen million for tax year twenty twenty-three, resulting in a new decreased assessed value of five point nine million dollars. Based on the proposed settlement, the tech, the township would issue a refund of six thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-one cents for a three-year period. Um the solicitor's office has reviewed the proposed settlement and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the settlement.
Alright, I'm going to move to approve the stipulated settlement for twelve twenty-two Welsh Road, condo number two, and authorize the township solicitor to execute the document on behalf of the township. Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Um next thing we have is Public Works. We're not buying anything tonight.
In a, in a way.
Go ahead and tell us.
Okay.
Traffic signal upgrades at Five Points.
Okay, so included in the capital investment plan are the traffic signal modernizations of the intersections at Cow Path Road and Five Points Plaza, um and Bethlehem Pike in Taylor Road and McLaughlin Road. Gilmore and Associates, a township engineer, prepared the signal specifications to meet township requirements and contractors' bids will be solicited utilizing the Penn, Penn bid website. A total of seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars was included in the twenty twenty-three capital investment plan for the traffic signal modernizations of both of the intersections. It is recommended the Board of Supervisors approves the authorization for the advertisement of the bid when it is deemed ready to place on Penn bid.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I'm going to move to authorize the advertisement of the bid for the traffic signal modernization on the intersections of Cow Path Road and Five Points Plaza and Bethlehem Pike and Taylor Road slash McLaughlin Road.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, do we have any old business? Okay. Go into new business. We are, um.
Item fourteen, National Police Week, National Police Week?
Yeah, under new business. Item number fourteen, adoption of resolution recognizing National Police Week. Carolyn, query.
Thank you. Each year, the Board of Supervisors recognizes National Police Week, which was established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two. Staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors continue this tradition and recognize the week from May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three through May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week.
Okay. I'm going to move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six, recognizing the week of May fifteenth through May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
I just have a little statement I'm going to read about National Police Week while we're going into it. I would just like to say that I support our police depart- our, our police department. I'd like our officers to know that we as residents support them and are grateful for all they do to allow us to feel safe in this community that I love and have loved for thirty years. I raised my kids here and knew they were safe. I help buyers choose new homes here every day and I, and have always said, you are safe here, your children will be safe here. I'm aware of how the men and women who keep us safe are often regarded and how difficult their jobs have become. I'd like to publicly thank each and every one of you for all you do to improve our lives. Thank you for the time you spend away from your families while you train to be better for us. Thank you for your bravery every time you make a traffic stop unsure of who or what situation is waiting for you as you approach the car you've pulled over. Thank you for answering the nine-one-one calls as fast as you can. Thank you for always being first on the scene of a medical emergency to calm the family. Thank you for helping unlock the car of the crying mom who was locked out. Thank you for realizing that kids are kids and some- Thank you for realizing that kids are kids and sometimes do dumb things and shouldn't ruin their futures. Thank you for teaching our kids to trust the police and make good life choices in the DARE program. Thank you for coloring and coffee with a cop. Thank you for loving our canines so they can also help to keep us safe. Thank you for being here, for showing up, for caring about our community and our residents. Thank you for going the extra mile to do the great job you do every day. I'm proud of you all every day and I'm thankful. I'm sure everyone agrees. All right, we are now going to adopt a resolution recognizing National Public Works Week.
Thank you. Um, this week, this year, um, National Public Works Week is being celebrated May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and the theme is connecting the world through public works. Staff is recommending that the board of supervisors adopt the resolution recognizing National Public Works Week.
Okay. We love public works as well. I'm sorry, I don't have a personal love letter, but we do.
Thank you for all the snow that you've removed. Thank you for the trees that you've helped to, yeah. Thank you for the paving. Thank you for the concrete. Thank you for.
We do have a big, long thing, so there is a little bit in here for you. Connecting the world through public works. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Montgomery Township. And whereas, infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents, business owners, and children in Montgomery Township to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year twenty twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, that we hereby recognize the week from May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as National Public Works Week. Resolved at the duly convened meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, conducted on this eighth day of May twenty twenty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have one more. Number sixteen is adoption of resolution recognizing National Emergency Services Week. So we have some love for, um, EMS as well.
Absolutely. Um, and also, um, they have been tremendous partners, um, to the township. Um, we have really a solid emergency services team, emergency management team. Um, it is, it is a real blessing because there are a lot of communities who are really struggling, um, especially with EMS right now and getting, you know, not just qualified individuals, but any individuals to want to be paramedics and EMTs. And, and we are very fortunate, um, that we are not in that position. So what we're, in nineteen seventy-four, President Gerald Ford authorized Emergency Services Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. We are recommending that the board of supervisors recognize the week from May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as EMS Week. So Greg, you're going to have to share.
Share the love.
All right, so I'm going to move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, recognizing the week of May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh as EMS Week. And then I'll read the long love letter as well.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
So here's the resolution. A resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, to recognize Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas in nineteen seventy-four, President Gerald Ford authorized Emergency Medical Services Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. And whereas, EMS providers are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden injury or illness. And whereas, through service, compassion, and dedication, EMS providers represent the very best of public service. And whereas, this year's theme is EMS Where Emergency, Where Emergency Care Begins, which reminds the public of EMS's most important mission, the ability to respond appropriately to the most urgent emergencies and to provide critical interventions in the field that saves lives and reduce long-term disability. And whereas, National Emergency Services Week brings together local communities and medical personnel to honor the dedication of those who provide day-to-day lifesaving, lifesaving services. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, that we hereby recognize the week from May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as National EMS Week. Resolved at the duly convened meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, conducted on this eighth day of May twenty twenty-three. One last thing, when we're talking about EMS, it's also Nurses Week. So there are some nurses that are near and dear to my heart. So I will just shout out to the nurses and thank them for everything that they do. Especially Emma and Matt Donovan, whose mom is in the, in the house tonight. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much for coming out.